We only have three members of the five member panel.
Paul Tardif, allowed to talk?
You have any attorneys tonight?
Uh, yeah, Paul Tardif has the first petition.
And then the second one is being a request to withdraw. I mean, that continue?
Continue, yeah. And, and we, we can do the date of the 25th. We have, we only have three. So we could do that.
I spoke to, I mean, I sent an email to Dan Horvind to the whole organ today. To try to set up a meeting for two new interested people.
Oh, good.
Maybe get some fresh blood.
What do I do for Tim Kelly? Is he in? No. Is he on?
He's on, yeah. Now go over to say more.
Where Tim is?
Now you can tell him to unmute himself.
Just say that out loud?
Yeah, he'll hear you. It takes a minute. He'll show it.
Where'd it go? Where did these? What did I do to Paul? What do I?
He up first?
He's up first.
Do you want to promote him to panelist?
Okay. Paul will be rejoining. So I leave that alone?
Yep. And then if you can promote me.
Can you guys hear me?
Can't see you though.
Can't see me? All right. Oh, there we go. There we go. No, I got it. All right.
The wonders of electronics.
There we go.
Hey, Jim, how are you?
Good yourself?
Well, thank you.
Excellent.
Discussion about it, but people still do.
Excellent.
I don't know.
Better be in here than being somewhere else, you know?
This is true. I'd like to be in, uh, like to be skiing, maybe.
I don't think so.
I gave those days up. Too cold.
They're gonna, they're gonna be getting a huge storm in Colorado up in, up in the Rockies over the weekend. Two to three feet.
Wow.
That's late.
I've tried to ski powder before and, you know, you know, I, I skied an awful lot years gone by, but we had a place in Ludlow at Mount Akemo. But then along comes this, this powdery stuff when I went out west and I couldn't figure it out because all I've ever skied is packed snow or ice.
Yeah, I'm not a fan of the powder myself. I can't get my, uh, I can't get my ankles to work properly in it.
Yeah.
Packed snow is good for me.
Hey, Dick.
Hey, there. How is everybody?
Wonderful. Thank you. How are you?
Still living. Every day's a new adventure.
Ain't that true?
That's good enough to make me a 5:30 dinner, so. I have to guzzle that down.
I was doing an albuterol treatment so I could breathe. It was like try to get over bronchitis.
That's not good, not good stuff, especially these days.
Oh. Yeah, everybody thinks it's COVID, you know, but I'm, I assure you it's not. I just got my vaccination and had three negative tests at the hospital last six weeks. I'm fine.
Good.
Somebody could say fine today, but how about tomorrow?
Tomorrow's another day.
Dick, have you had a chance to get your shots?
I got my first shot. Had, had to go to Gillette to do it.
I just want to let you know that we're live on YouTube now.
Okay, thank you. You're just waiting for Mr. Igo, please.
Okay.
I managed, I managed to get my two already.
Good, good for you. Yeah, they don't, they don't make it easy, that's for sure.
Wife too.
Hey, we're being broadcast live now, so.
Yep.
Hopefully Mr. Igo will join us soon. If not, we'll get started on the next if Mr. Tardif would agree. What time do we have now, please? Well, we have three more minutes. I mean, it's only 5:57. So let's give him the chance to get on.
Well, Paul isn't even, he's got his camera off at his mic. He's unmuted, so.
Well, he may be listening. But not waiting to be invited, maybe, who knows? And if that's what he's waiting for, you can invite him in because he's going to be the first person presenting, so.
Serious.
There we go. Always nice to see you, sir.
Yeah.
We were talking about you. I hope you weren't eavesdropping.
Oh, I heard everything.
Okay. As an aside, I was on a Zoom court appearance and I, I, I said something that I probably shouldn't have. And then I saw that my mic was off, so that was good.
Yeah, that's nice.
Hey, Sean. Your mic is off, buddy.
I gotta read.
There you go.
Oh, hey, Sean. What are you doing tonight?
Good. All right, be ready to go.
Yeah.
Why don't we get started?
Okay. The March 11, 2021 meeting of the Yarmouth zoning Board of Appeals is about to convene. As a precautionary measure to reduce the spread of the coronavirus, this meeting will be held by remote participation. My name is Sandy Clark. I am the zoning administrator and will be serving as moderator for this virtual meeting. I will now turn it over to the zoning Board of Appeals Chairman.
Well, good evening. This is our regularly scheduled meeting this March 11. We, we thank you all for participating via Zoom. My name is Steve DeYoung. I'm the chairman of this board. And I'll begin by calling a roll call vote of our members, please, and that Tom Barron.
Are you here?
All right, Tim Kelly, you're present.
Present.
Sean Igo, you're present.
Present.
And as is Dick Martin. Good evening, gentlemen. With a quorum present, I now call the meeting to order. I ask the moderator to explain how these virtual meetings work.
Thank you. Pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, this meeting of the Yarmouth Zoning Board of Appeals is being conducted via remote participation. Although no in-person attendance will be permitted, every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access and participate in the proceedings. Persons who would like to view this meeting while in progress may do so by watching via this virtual meeting or the live feed on the Town of Yarmouth YouTube channel. You may also listen to the meeting by dialing into the number provided on the notice of meeting. The recording of the meeting will also be available on the Town of Yarmouth YouTube channel for future viewing. Please be patient as we work to overcome any technological challenges with virtual meeting. For all meetings, all audience participants will enter the virtual meeting muted. Participants will be unmuted when called upon to speak by the chair or moderator. All votes must be roll call votes. If you are not speaking, please mute yourself to avoid unnecessary background noise. Do not use speakerphone or Bluetooth devices when speaking. For applicants and presenters, applicants can use the raise hand button or press nine on their phone to identify themselves to the chair. The moderator will unmute applicants when they are called upon to speak during their portion of the agenda. Applications or presentations provided by the applicant will be displayed in the virtual meeting by the moderator and advanced by the moderator. Or if pre-approved for larger projects, temporary panelist capabilities may be given to presenters to share their screens while giving their presentation. All presenters and speakers need to identify themselves by first and last name and affiliation when speaking. For public hearings, during the portion of the hearing designated for public comment, the chair will ask who in the audience have any public comments or questions. Members of the public may speak by selecting the raise hand button or pressing nine on their phone and waiting for the chair to call on them to speak. Members of the public recognized by the chair are asked to identify themselves by first and last name and affiliation for the public record and then provide their comment. Prior to concluding opportunities for public comment, the chair will ask one last time if anyone wishes to speak or give additional comment. I will now hand the meeting back to the board.
Well, thank you, Ms. Moderator. We appreciate your, your comments and instructions. We have four matters on our board agenda this evening. The first is that a petition number 4887, Jeffrey and Karen Tyndall, concerning property located at 12 Tupelo Road in South Yarmouth. That's a zoning district R40. Our applicant this evening seeks a variance, variances rather, from zoning bylaws 202.5, 203.5, and 500 in order to construct a detached, single-family dwelling on an existing lot with dwelling, as I understand it. All right. And presenting this evening is Attorney Paul Tardif, is that correct?
That's correct.
All right. And if you'd go ahead and start your, tell us all about your petition, we'd appreciate it.
That's great. Thank you. First of all, can you hear me okay?
We can hear you fine. Yeah, thank you.
Uh, my name is Paul Tardif. I'm an attorney in Yarmouth Port and I do represent the, the petitioners Jeff and Karen Tyndall. They are, by the way, attending by phone or or computer tonight, so in case there's any questions, they are here. And as you indicated, we are seeking variances pursuant to several sections of the bylaw. The, this property is in the R40 zoning district, currently is improved with a one-story, single-family structure with four bedrooms. That was built in approximately 1944. A single-story, one-bedroom cottage, as well as two sheds. The property contains approximately 84,341 square feet of upland with another approximate 90,000 square feet of wetland, including its own island, which is accessed by footbridge and has a pier. So a total of over a four-acre parcel in, in, in this zone, it's unheard of. The existing building coverage, just using the upland calculation, is 3.5%. And all the structures meet all current setbacks and other bulk requirements. The petitioners are proposing to construct a new two-story, single-family home with three bedrooms. And it will be tied into the current septic system that serves, that serves the property for up to five bedrooms. The main house has its, the structure will only have three. The main house has its own separate system for three bedrooms. This is going to have its separate system to tie into the, the septic for up to five bedrooms. The structure is going to meet all the bulk requirements of the bylaw. Building coverage will increase to 4.9%. The cooking facilities in the cottage are going to be removed and that will be used as an art studio. The relief sought tonight is only to permit what is in essence two-family dwelling on this enormous lot. Section 500 of the zoning bylaw defines a two-family dwelling as a quote "building" containing two dwelling units with not more than three lodges or borders per family. So the bylaw contemplates that the two units must be contained in one building. We are seeking to just separate them on this enormous lot and that's why we need a variance. Now regarding the ability to create and maintain two dwellings on one lot, there are a few things I want to tell you. One of them is, first of all, even in other sections of our bylaw, the bylaw does contemplate having separate dwellings for separate on one lot. For example, under section 407 regarding accessory apartments, you can have one of those apartments in an outbuilding. Under zoning bylaw section 203.5, the table of dimensional requirements, that states that in an R40 zoning district, the minimum lot size is 40,000 square feet, but footnote C also says that as it pertains to two-family dwelling, the lot area requires twice the normal minimum lot size of the district, so 40,000. And in this case, we have over 80,000 square feet of upland. So it is possible under our bylaws for the dimensional requirements to still comply with that.
Which was, no, was that, excuse me?
That's which note, C as in Charlie. Thank you. And then the, the last thing that I wanted to point out is on January 14th, so about a month ago, Charlie Baker signed a, a new economic development bill, which aimed, well, the, the biggest goal was to put $600 million into the mass economy to help with the COVID situation we face. And among other things, one of the goals was to spur housing development. And included with the development provisions, the, the act revised portions of general laws, chapter 40A, of which are bylaws based. And in, in that, one of the things that they changed was the definition of multifamily housing, which they define under the, under the statute now, that we haven't adopted yet, but just for reference, the multifamily housing is now defined as a building with three or more residential dwelling units or two or more buildings on the same lot with more than one residential dwelling unit in each building. So under that definition, we would actually not be a two, we would be considered a multifamily housing and would be allowed under section 40A. The proposal in this case, I think, meets the criteria for the variance under 102.2.2. The board can find the variance under the variance criteria. I believe that there would be a hardship in this case for the applicants. They have a, a four-acre parcel with one house on it now. They're just looking to put another house on there to help with the rental, maybe to house some family members when they come to visit and then hopefully leave. The, the hardship in this case, it's, it's odd because the hardship is not so much for the soil conditions or the shape of the geography, but it's, it's just something especially affecting this property in that you can't find a lot this size in that section of town. I, I took a look at the Google Maps today to try and find anything that was even close. There's not. And as I indicated, just to, to reference how big this property is, it has its own island, which I don't think a lot of people can say. The third and most important one, I think, is that the relief can be granted without substantial detriment to the public or to nullify or substantially derogate from the intent and purpose of the bylaw. First of all, as you indicated, we do meet the provisions of footnote provisions of section 203.5. We have sufficient land area. We meet the new definition of multifamily dwelling in chapter 40A. The by, the bylaw does contemplate separate dwellings. We're merely asking to permit this new structure to be located 75 feet from the main house. And we meet all the bulk requirements, all the setbacks, height, block coverage, et cetera. It's just one of those cases where a variance is, I think, warranted on principles of reasonableness and fairness. The requirement that the dwellings in this case be touching each other, when there's such an amount of upland, it just seems unnecessary and I think it would be in keeping with the bylaw. So just so you know, the Board of Health has indicated that the septic systems currently on the property are sufficient to handle the, the new structure. The project has also been to the Conservation Commission and they have approved it as well. And I'll think, I think you agree that the property is unique with unique circumstances and it's a good project. Although not a lot of precedent for this, I, I think the reason is because you don't see a lot this size very often. I think we've had variances for two structures on one lot before with two units under a little different circumstances, but I'm going to leave it at that. So I, I, I hope that you'll agree that the variance criteria in this case is met. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Martin.
Okay, um, I don't, I mean, I recognize what's being done here is, uh, Mr. Tardif says, there's not a whole lot of precedent for it. On the other hand, I don't find it to be any derogation, whatever the word would be from, from the bylaw in terms of, you know, again, the size of the lot, adding another structure. I think this site is big enough so somebody could even bring, bring in a little cul-de-sac and potentially even get three lots in there and, and this would be probably a better circumstance than that, especially if the petitioners would limit any further development to the site, to the, to the two habitable structures and, and, and confirm that the kitchen would be taken out of the little cottages there now. You know, is the hardship question, I'm not really completely sure of that, but I certainly don't find any big problem with allowing two dwellings on a large site like this that could normally accommodate a duplex. I don't have any questions relevant to the actual proposal. I understand it and so that's all.
Thank you, Ms. Igo.
Uh, yes, good evening, Attorney Tara.
Good evening.
Question, why can't you just subdivide the lot?
Um, actually, when my, when my clients purchased this property, it was actually called 252 Great Western Road and it actually was comprised of two lots. As soon as they bought it, they put it back together. They wanted to keep control of their lot, keep control of what, what was out there. So that, that thing was two lots up till 2017. And so I, I think they just want the privacy. They like that. And that's another reason to have it separate from the main house.
And how would you sell that property?
It has to be, it was, it's one property. It's all put together right now.
I, but I'm just saying, down the road, if you, if you created two, a two-family, if you created two buildings for two families and it's all on one deed, correct?
Correct.
And you went to sell it, you would not be able to subdivide it then. Would you be in agreement with that?
Um, the only way you could subdivide it is to go back to the planning board. Make sure you have sufficient frontage, lot area and setbacks of all the structures to the line that you draw. I don't know if you could, I, I don't know what you, if you could do that because the cottage, I mean, yeah, the cottage is sort of in between. But again, it's, it's not their intention to do that. They, they bought it as two lots and took it away. They, they didn't want it.
Okay.
So it would, to answer your question, it would have to be sold as one lot with two structures or two living spaces on it.
You know, as far as the space and the setbacks and everything, I've got absolutely no problem with any of this, but the, I think the purpose and intent of the bylaw is to not have multifamily dwellings in RS40 zoning districts, which this is. There doesn't seem to be a hardship because they could subdivide the lot and create a second lot and you probably would have to come here unless perhaps you needed frontage. And if you did need frontage, I mean, I think that's something that if not. And you know what? I mean, our bylaw seems pretty clear to me about what constitutes a multifamily dwelling in its, its two units in one building. So I, I think we would be clearly going against what the purpose and intent of this bylaw is. If the, if the voters at town meeting want to change it, I think that's probably the better way to go. I certainly have no problem with the size of the lot, but I, I'm, I, I'm having a hard time being convinced. A, I don't think qualifies for a variance. I don't think you've met the criteria. But just aside from that, I, I'm finding that it clearly runs contrary to what the purpose and intent of the bylaw is and especially what the petitioner could go and subdivide it. And it was previously subdivided into two lots, just to, to say, I want to have my two buildings on one lot. It just doesn't really make a lot of sense to me.
Well, the, the purpose and intent of the bylaw, remember, under 407, the people in this town voted to have outbuildings and in fact, limited that square footage to 800 square feet. If you wanted to put a two-story building on, on there, 20 by 20, so you'd get your 800 feet. You, you could do that. What we're looking to do is put a building up that's 26 by 28, not much bigger, bigger, but you know, three bedrooms. On a lot that has over 84,000 square feet of area, it, it, the fact that it has to take some, I'm sorry.
You, you would agree that that would be family-related or affordable for what you're talking about?
Well, yes, but, but the intent of the bylaw to say we never intended to have sep- separate structures for two family, how can you say that when, when the bylaw does allow for it in other circumstances?
The only reason I say that is because that's the definition.
Right, but what's the purpose? What, what, what would the purpose be to put two structures side by side on a 84,000 square foot lot?
I, I don't think it would be any, and quite frankly, if, if you go and subdivide that and if you need any relief for some reason, come back and I'm certainly going to do it. Again, I, the only problem I have is what you're trying to do, the way you're trying to do it. I just, I, I just don't find it runs contrary to the bylaw.
All right, Mr. Kelly, any questions?
No, I actually, um, I think it's a decent project. I like it. I think it's enough space there. They'd be far enough apart, kind of like this, the fact that it stays a, uh, one piece of property and they're not going to sell it off. I think it's going to be a unique property and I don't think that's a, it doesn't sound like that it would be their intention to sell it. I think it's going to be a nice, nice piece of property that somebody's going to hold on to forever. So I think, uh, I don't have an issue with it myself.
Mr. Barron.
Well, when I, when I first read the, when I first read the petition, I was, I was struck by the location on Tupelo Road because you know, serving on the planning board, I, in, on, on July 20th, 2016, we had approved a division of that, the, the entire property into two lots. And then in February of 2017, the, the lots were combined into, into a single lot again. So there, there's a lot of history that has already occurred on this and, and as, as far as the, the proposal and the, the, the need to satisfy the requirements of this current petition, I, I have no, I have no objection to to the, to the proposal, but it has been a very busy lot administratively, going, going back a good six years or, or more.
Have you done this, sir?
Yeah.
So I'm going to ask, just point out, when we go to the use table for H12, it's emphatically stating RS40, no. For multifamily. When you tell me that it was previously subdivided, do you know if the previous subdivision would have allowed for a building to be constructed on one lot without any relief?
Steve, can I just inter, uh, intercede with a correction, I think? It's not RS40, it's just R40. Uh, RS is single.
Oh, Jesus, I'm sorry. Sure, I'm so sorry.
I think Sean said that too.
Oh, okay.
Whoa.
Well, R40. I mean, I'm just looking at the use table and it references residential, residential 40.
RS is single family only. R40 is, is not.
Right.
Thank you, Dick.
Yeah.
As always, we're brought to our heels by better minds.
Not necessarily.
Mr. Chairman, I'm just giving a plan out. I might have Mr. Tyndall chime in if possible, but I, I, I do have a plan that shows, shows where the line used to be between these two lots and believe it or not, it actually ran through one of the buildings.
It ran through. It ran through two buildings.
Two buildings. Yep. So I'm not. You can see it. It's a dotted line where you stand. It goes right through two, two of the buildings.
Okay, thank you.
That would may seem, I mean, wouldn't you agree that with, with the size of this lot, that two, it, it, despite the wetland with enough upland, as you pointed out, wouldn't you agree that this lot could be subdivided to accommodate a second dwelling?
Well, I, as I said, it was, or Mr. Barron said, it was subdivided into two lots. I, again, the, the line went through buildings. I'm not sure why. Which may be with the reason why they got rid of it and maybe because that line was difficult to, to place, to have enough upland. I am not sure because that, that was a prior owner who did that.
Because that was a prior owner who did that, so.
I can probably intercede with that too. It's probably because one of the lots was probably a reduced frontage lot, or actually both of them were, I guess. And that would require a certain square size. And so the only way they could probably get the two lots was to draw the line through the house. And I guess the intent probably at the time was to take down the house and have two other building lots.
I can confirm that that was part of the conversation at the time.
Okay, if I could continue with my question, has the existing cottage been used as a second dwelling on this property all along? And what's to stop that existing cottage, which is going to be allegedly be converted to a converted art studio, from being a third residence on this property?
Well, the kitchen will be removed and we could have an inspection by the building department, if that's what you like. But that is the plan, is Ms. Tyndall would like to have that as her art studio.
Right, how many bathrooms are in that structure?
I believe it's one. It's one bedroom.
Okay. I come back to a different point of view on the hardship issue. I know that Mr. Igo just briefly, I want to address that. The hardship, I guess you could say, would be because of the the difficulty in contouring this into two lots. But also with the reality that would be probably be that the way you're designing it, the best use of this property. But I'm not sure I know what really gets to that level that we anticipate, a hardship. No financial hardship. There's currently two dwelling units on the property and there's no with all of this wetland, I guess I could see some of it because you have, boy, right up to it coastal banks. And conservation already weighed in and said, yeah.
They did.
All right, well, I don't have any other question. Forgive me all. It's winter season. So let me invite anybody in our audience who would care to chime in or make a comment either in favor or against this petition. Please raise your hand. So you may be recognized by our moderator.
Mr. Chairman, Jeff Tyndale has his hand up.
Well, he's the petitioner, so sure, I guess we can allow him to speak. Invite him and let's get to it.
Okay. He's invited in.
This is Jeff. Hi, this is Jeff Tyndall. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can, sir.
Okay, good evening. Yeah, so I'm here with my wife, Karen Tyndall, and I've been listening to the meeting tonight. And to Mr. Igo, the two lots that were divided, the only way to get equal upland was to tear the house down. And we decided to hang on to this place. It's been in my family since it was bought by my family in 1905. So that was the reason why we wanted to, you know, to hang on to this and keep it one lot. So I just wanted to chime in on that.
Well, thank you very much.
And then there's your hardship.
While you're here, Mr. Tyndall, could you tell us what was the reason for the rejoining of the two lots?
Well, yeah, again, you know, we have no intentions of selling this property. So we decided that, you know, we weren't going to tear the house down. So we just decided it was best for our family to put it into one lot.
But when you had it as, oh, that's right, too, the property line ran right through, I mean, the, yeah, the property line ran right through the main house. Is that it?
Yeah, the, according to the land surveyors, they said that they, you know, the town or I guess requirements to keep the straight line as possible. You can't zigzag, you know, all over the property. So the straightest lines they could get with to keep the upland properties was to to run it right through one of the buildings.
Well, that wouldn't fly. I'm amazed that some planning board actually allowed that subdivision plan to occur. Or somebody decided to build, no, the house has been there since 1905, is that what I hear?
No, my family ran a boys' nautical sea camp, Cape Bonnet Dune here, yeah, so.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, it was built in '44 and again, requiring him to tear the family household down, I think creates your hardship.
Say that again.
Requiring him to remove the family house that's been on the property because a line runs through it. It might create your hardship that you.
Okay. Does anybody, are you done, Mr. Tyndall?
Thank you.
Yes.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, you're quite welcome. Does anybody else in our audience care to speak in favor or against this petition? If so, please raise your hand.
There is a Janet Corcoran that's in the audience that has her hand raised.
Sure, Janet Corcoran?
Yes.
Please invite her into the meeting.
I did.
Hello, you need to unmute yourself. We can't hear her. What did you say?
Thank you. I just, I have a question. My name's Janet Corcoran. I'm here with my husband, Paul. We're from 37.
Hello.
Hello.
Where do you two live? You need to tell us first where you live.
37 Mooring Lane. So we're in a butter to Topola Road. And we just have a question about it's a heavily wooded area there. And we're just interested in what the plans are for particularly the wooded area and trees along Topola Road and the sightline to where the new home will be built.
Well, I can assure you that they're going to need to remove trees to build the house. But that's, any homeowner has a right to remove trees on their property. Nobody has.
I understand, just asking the question. And it's a large frontage and just understanding, are they planning on taking it all down? Or just part of it for the home?
Well, maybe Mr. Tyndall could chime in and tell us if in fact you're intending to keep a tree scape that would sort of block views of this home as it relates to Tupelo Road.
Sure, can you hear me?
Yep.
Yes, yeah, so the driveway would come off of Tupelo and sort of wind sort of S shape in to block the the site from Great Western Road into the house. So, yeah, we're hoping that we can keep enough trees up so you can't see it from Tupelo or Great Western.
Okay, thank you.
All right, does anybody else in our audience, were you done, Ms. Corcoran? Okay, thank you so much for attending our meeting. It's nice to see people in our town getting back together in some fashion. Does anybody else in our audience care to speak in favor or against this petition? If so, please identify yourself to the moderator.
I see no hands raised.
All right, so we now close it to the public commentary and input in the petition. We open it up to a board, questions, deliberation, you know, considerations and deliberations. I'm just going again by screen. We're moving all over the screen, so I'm going to go in the logical order. I have, I've got Dick Martin up at the top of my screen. Dick, what are your thoughts on this petition?
Actually, I don't have any real problem with it. It's because of the land area and I think Mr. Todd makes a point about the hardship, you know. If you want to get another house on the site, you have to essentially get rid of the oldest semi-historic house that's there, which doesn't make a whole lot of sense in terms of making anything any better. Many towns allow, you know, if you've got the double zoning and can do a two-family or whatever, many towns allow that to be in two structures anyways. I think Yama is kind of behind on that and really should look at that. So with this kind of land area and the house being built is a pretty small house and you're losing a cottage anyways, I wouldn't have any problem. I would want to make certain restrictions to it, as I kind of mentioned before, relevant to making sure that the cottage just becomes a studio or whatever and loses its kitchen. And that the site would be permanently limited to no more than the two residential dwellings.
Very good. Mr. Barron, your thoughts?
I basically have no objection to the proposal. I do support the idea of an inspection of the cottage following the work to make sure that it does not, that it is no longer a residence with the removal of kitchen facilities and anything else that would be pertinent to that. So essentially, I do support the proposal with that one provision.
Okay. Next in line then is Mr. Igo.
Thank you. Well, as I've said before, I do think there's ample room on this piece of property and I'm certainly not opposed in principle to it. However, I think if something like this needs to be allowed, I think it's best allowed through the planning board and presented at town meeting and raised as an issue and then voted on and allowed. I think doing this by variance clearly goes against the purpose and intent of the bylaw because the only thing we can go by is what our definitions are and what the regulations tell us we can and can't do in the bylaw. While it certainly would be a hardship to remove, to be apt to remove a building to subdivide the lot, that really is not what we're talking about yet. We're talking about allowing a second freestanding single-family residence on this build, on this particular piece of property, is what we're talking about. And that is not allowed under our bylaw. So while I certainly understand why they want to do it, unfortunately, I can't support that. Thank you.
Very good. Mr. Kelly.
I support it. I think that just the hardship alone by taking that, having to take the house out would be an issue. There's enough land there otherwise, so it's just, it's kind of a formality, that technicality that he can't. So it wasn't for the single issue. He could subdivide it, put it in there. So just because he can't, I think we should allow it. I'm in favor of it.
Well, my thoughts are that while submitting it to town meeting may be something that would be desirable and perhaps the planning board would consider this in future requests to consider for changes in the zoning bylaws at town meeting. I am struck with the reality that even if we subdivided this currently, there would need to be relief because of the lack of complete frontage, necessary frontage. The, you know, the the drawing of a line through a house to create two building lots, this house having been in this family for so long, I think that's kind of an absurd outcome. I can't think of another time we've allowed this in town, at least not during my reign on this board. But it's a very interesting question. I do think that there's a good basis for Mr. Todd's arguments when he says that we have, I'm just reading it a second time, multi-family definition under 500, section 500 of our zoning bylaws. The recognition, what still disturbs me is the recognition that, I can't see a zoning district where this is allowed safe to be one. But y'all tell me I'm wrong on that. I'm happy to hear, et cetera. You know, I see VC1, VC2, VC3, VC4 across the board, multi-family is Board of Appeals and an MOD. But we know that those are going to be high district, high use areas because that was the intent of those bylaws, creating the MOD and the VC2, 3, and 4. So, you know, why do we have variances? Well, we have variances when we can't otherwise use property to its fullest and maximum. I think in this instance, proper use of this property would be to add, you know, if that's what they want to spend their money on, it would be to add a second home. It would be the highest use of this property. They couldn't get more than two homes in here if they subdivided and got whatever necessary relief they needed. But, I mean, I agree with Dick and Tom, Tim and, and while I hate to disagree with Sean because he always comes in with such very thoughtful arguments and I think he's right, that this could be well, well-resolved by an action of the town. Since I haven't, since it's almost novel to me at least. I was thinking back, the only one I could think of was in the B1 zoning district near the old vacuum mine that proved problematic in many ways. And I don't see that happening here. I think it's a tasteful setup. I think that it's, the building design looks adequate to me. I'm very concerned about that cottage. I joined with Dick in saying that it must be, if I'm going to vote in favor, that a condition must be that that is made to not be habitable for dwelling purposes. A studio, I don't care about a studio. They can do anything they want in the empty building, but I don't want a kitchen. I'm even skeptical about a bath, not having had that bath removed, but, you know. I don't want to see it in any way be residential, a residential use or dwelling use. So I'm going to announce that I'm going to vote in favor, but with specific and very stringent conditions about that cottage. So is anybody willing to consider making a motion for a?
Mr. Chairman, could I add one thing that might help a little bit with Sean's thought process? Is that this site is presently, has two dwelling units on it. And so it's already there. It's just a question of we're getting rid of one and adding a different one, granted a little bigger. But they could probably have, by right, added on to the existing cottage structure and made a bigger house there as well.
Oh, they could have made it and added on and made it duplex, right?
Or that. Right. So, you know, that as well and with us potentially restricting the cottage to not being a cottage, I think we're accomplishing what we want to.
But again, I think Sean really does we might want to have planning board consider this as a town, so the town may vote on it. We don't have to consider it as variances moving forward. So again, is anybody prepared to make a motion?
I'd be willing to move petition number 4887 as requested with the following conditions, that the present cottage on the site have its kitchen removed completely and that their owners would agree to no further subdivision or no future subdivision of the property.
I'd second that, but Dick, I would add the inspection by building to ensure that the cottage was not habitable.
Yep, I'm fine with that addition.
I don't know what the structural realities are with respect to that cottage. I'm still concerned that there remains the bedroom. Every art studio I've ever been in around Cape Cod usually is free-flowing. I don't know why we would have a separate room called the bedroom. So I would want to add, personally, I would ask that you consider adding to your motion and to your second, that the doorway connecting the two rooms. that the doorway connecting the, the two rooms that would remain excluding the bathroom would be opened. So that it could not accommodate even an oversized door. I don't, in other words, I don't want it to be shut off from the main room. We don't have a floor plan, so I can't be more specific. And I also would like to see added to the conditions that this property not be used. This cottage not be used in any way for dwelling purposes.
I have no trouble.
Would you two consider that? Those additions?
Accept that.
All right, now we have a motion before us with stated conditions, which has been seconded. Let's have some discussion on this one. Mr. Igo, your thoughts? What'd you say?
I said, I think you already know my thoughts.
Okay. Well, if you don't want to revisit them in light of the motion and the, and the conditions, that, that's what makes the, this voting process of a fundamental, well, wonderfully thought out choice. So we're now going to go to a roll call vote unless somebody wants to have conversation on the motion. And hearing none, we're going to start with Mr. Martin again, just by the logistics of my screen. Mr. Martin?
Hi.
Mr. Barron?
Hi.
Mr. Kelly?
Hi.
Mr. Igo? Nay?
Nay.
And Mr. De Young, aye. So you need to identify those specific roll call votes by person. When you submit a draft decision to me and thank you for your presentation, but again, the admonition to the planning board to consider what to do in these sorts of circumstances. When you have eighty thousand square feet of lot, a lot, lot. Thank you. Good night.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, it brings us to our next petition. That is Paula A. Quigley of eight forty-eight Eileen Street, Yarmouth Port. That property is in a zoning district R forty. And our applicant seeks a special permit under zoning by law four oh seven for a family related apartment. Something we usually consider, but in this instance, we're instead going to be considering whether or not to grant a request for continuance to our next board meeting. I think it's March twenty five. Our moderator can help us on that. And the reason behind it is, is that, as I understand it, is the petitioner is located in Florida and has been dealing with some ill, short-term illness. Am I right on that, Ms. Moderator?
Um, I didn't know where she was, but she said she was in the hospital.
Oh, okay. I, for some reason, thought it was in Florida. Maybe it's one of those other emails I've gotten over the last couple of weeks. In any event, I think the request is kind of reasonable. Does anybody? Is anybody willing to make a motion on that request for continuance to the next regularly scheduled meeting, which the agenda can accommodate?
Although.
Second? I go seconds. Okay. Mr. I, well, Mr. Martin? You all might. Mr. Barron?
Hi.
Mr. Kelly?
Hi.
Mr. Igo?
Hi.
Mr. De Young, aye, that's why that continues. That matters continued over to our next board meeting. Again, I believe to be March twenty fifth. That brings us to our next petition, four eight eighty nine. Hugh Kilmatten concerning property located at twenty-four Little Dipper Lane in South Yarmouth. The property is located in our twenty-five zoning district. Our applicant this evening seeks a special permit under zoning by law one oh four point three point two. Or in the alternative of variance under two oh three point five to construct an addition on a pre-existing non-conforming dwelling on a pre-existing non-conforming lot approaching into the setback. Okay, I think I got that. Who's here to present for the petitioner, please? I see Hugh's symbol up there. There you go. Are you able to give us a visual?
We're trying.
We, we're trying too. And we've been trying for a year, so. There you are.
Can you hear us okay?
Yes, we can. Yeah. Why don't you go ahead and tell us all about your petition, if you would?
Okay, my, my name is Hugh Kilmatten. This is my wife, Susan. I'm, we're co-owners of a property at twenty-four Little Dipper Lane in South Yarmouth. The, it's in a neighborhood of Little Dipper Lane is, is a lollipop road. So there's one entrance and one exit. And there's about fifteen different properties on the road and they were all built around the nineteen forties or nineteen fifties. The, we bought this particular house about fifteen years ago and we've been using it mostly as a summer house. And we'd like to move there full-time. And both my wife and I are active. I'm an engineer. She's a professional portrait artist. And we're in our seventies and so we want to try to maintain our living space on the first floor. So right now, we want to be able to add space for her to work as an artist, for me to do the engineering work. Input a bedroom on the first floor and then a bathroom and a three-season room. We wanted, and we looked at where we could put the addition on the lot. We can't do it on the left-hand side because there's not enough room. We can't do it in the back because of interference with the septic system. So we want to remove the existing garage and put the addition on that side. If, if I pull the existing corner of the garage forward straightforward, it automatically gets closer to the road and it cuts into the existing non-conforming setback of, of about eighteen feet. And oh, in the we want to expand it two feet, you know, closer to the road. So that the, the bedroom will be wide enough so that we're not, it's, it's just not too narrow. The, I have an existing medical condition and making it too narrow would really be unsafe for me. And the, the area where we want to extend the setback, the two feet goes towards the back of the Village Green motel. So I don't think anyone would really be very impacted that way. We've been to the Conservation Commission, the Health Department and the Water Department, and we have their approvals. You want to add anything, honey?
No, we, we love the area and I'm looking forward to, I can't believe that I'm leaving the place we're in now, Hingham, but I've loved South Yarmouth for what, we've been married fifty years? We've been at fifty-three years. I've been going there. Because his parents had a house on Little Dipper Lane.
Well, thank you very mu- much. Both of you have spoken very eloquently about your petition. And I think you've given us a lot of information to consider. So why don't we, yes, we're going to reverse direction now. We're going to start with Mr. Igo. Questions of our petitioner?
Um, I don't really have any questions. I'm very familiar with Little Dipper Lane. I actually grew up down in that area myself. And if he, he could just just out correct, it's across the street there, that would back up to the Village Green. I do think this is a special permit to Mr. Chairman versus a variance. I don't think they need any variance relief here.
I don't usually, we have considered these corner lots and even though it's the same road, it's essentially a corner lot by variance for these sorts of things. My concern is that in the past, I'm sorry to interject, but in the past, we've always looked somewhat askance at creating frontage issues. So what are your thoughts on that? Frontage setback issues?
Well, they've already, because they have two fronts and two sides on the corner lot as, as the board knows. I'm not sure if the petitioner knows that, but, or the people at home. But they're already encroaching on their, what is actually a front setback where Little Dipper goes around the corner. They're currently eighteen four. So they're just extending a little bit more into that setback. And as the petitioner indicated, he has a reason for that. He needs a little bit wider room. I, I don't think it's really going to be noticeable at all. They're fine with their current front setback. I think this probably would be averaged anyway there, so I don't know how deep the lot is, but at any rate, he did explain that is that this is really the only place that they can put what they want to put. And they need the extra room. So I don't really have any questions. The only comment I have is I do think it's a reasonable request. And I think it fits fine into that neighborhood. So I don't think it would have any negative impact on any of the neighbors or the surrounding zoning districts. So at this point, I do plan on supporting it, but that's all I have for now. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Kelly.
I'm, I'm looking at the picture of Google Earth and it shows a, an empty lot behind their house. Is that actually your lot?
Yes.
Okay, that's what I thought. I'm just, just clarifying it. Now, I like the, I like the design of the house. We've done a good job on that. It's a nice layout. I think that's going to look better than what you have now with that garage there. It's a slight variance, but it's a small road. I don't think your neighbors had any issues with it. It's not going to bother anybody across the street where it's going to, where would, would have had the most sight to it. So I, I, I'd like, I think it's a nice looking project.
Hey, thank you very much, Mr. Kelly. Mr. Barron?
Uh, Mr. Kilmatten, what sort of engineer are you?
I'm a mechanical engineer by training, but I've, I've morphed into a a software engineer.
Well, he started as a nuclear engineer in the Navy.
Excellent. Now let's get back to the petition.
Yes, I'm a civil engineer and I've, I've had a similar length of time as you for forty years before moving down. But I, I think the plan that you've presented is a very unique approach to a very tight lot and if, if it, even, even though the non-conformity is stressed a little bit on the, on the east side. I don't, I, I don't think it's significant and I would support the, the proposal.
Thank you, Mr. Martin.
I don't have any real issues. The bedroom on the downstairs right now is becoming an art studio. I take it that's to retain the three bedrooms scenario that's in right now relative to your septic system, probably.
Yes.
Well, we'll have to meet the former people with that art studio that were just on right before us.
Okay, so.
Oh, it's yeah, it's looking for about two feet additionally, additional relief in terms of the proximity to the street. Normally it'd be a thirty-foot sideline from both of those, both of those roads. But it's already way non-conforming, so I don't know. That's another two feet.
That's, that's the need for relief. You know, I, I got to agree with all comments that have been made so far. I don't see it as a, anything other. I agree with Mr. Igo completely that it should be a special permit as opposed to a variance. We've dealt with these same issues before. And my memory is we've always dealt with them as special permits as the, the road wraps right around the property. And even though it's one name, I guess it's just a one name through the whole circle. Is that it?
Yes.
Okay, so you, you actually have the benefit of the road on two sides, the same road on two sides of your property. I think what you're doing is modest for the size of the lot. I'm still uncertain though as to, I, I, I thought like Mr. Kelly, when they looked at that Google Earth picture, that there was a, a significant amount of land back there undeveloped. And I know we're going to come to some correspondence in a moment, but did I hear you say you own that?
Yes.
That's where the septic is. It goes.
Oh, maybe we're talking about a different thing. It seemed like it was much more green back there than your lot, but that's okay.
Yeah, their, their leaching pit goes right through there though. That's on the, on the, on the backside of that property there.
Okay, so I want to apologize. One of your butters did send in something. And is it, and I hope I'm saying it right. You might help me there. Sandy, is it Mr. Canova? Or Cusover or?
Canova.
Canova. And I apologize because I didn't print his letter off and I can't print it, either look at it while I'm now on screen with you. But my memory, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, is Mr. Canova was supportive of his neighbors' efforts to improve their property. Is that right?
Yes, he was. I read.
So we do have two more pieces of correspondence before. Excuse me, we then now open it to public commentary, if any. Dear members of the Board of Appeals, we are aware of the variance being requested by the Kilmartins. Both of us are in favor of granting the petition and feel that it would be beneficial to the neighbor in the long run. Well, that's because they're beautifying their property and they're going to increase the tax base. We like that. The Kilmartins have been transparent in their desire to improve the property. They've shared their construction plans as well as alerting us to the meeting on three eleven twenty-one. That's from Stephen and Barbara LeClaire by way of a, an email dated February twenty-seven. We have another email from Peter Kilmatten.
His brother.
I don't know why we need to read that. We're not going to read that email in, all right, Mr. Kilmatten?
That's okay.
Does anybody in our audience care to speak either in favor or against this petition or just have questions about it? If so, raise your hand, please, and let our moderator know who you are.
There are no hands raised, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. And that, that causes us to close the public input into the petition and anybody need to have discussion before proceeding maybe to a vote or? Anybody prepared to make a motion now?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion that when we approve the special permit as requested with no conditions.
I'll second that.
That was Mr. Barron?
Correct.
Well, I think there's a pretty simple one. Does anybody, nobody wants to have discussion on this motion before proceeding to a vote, do they? Okay, we're gonna, now, I'm just gonna break, just to break it up occasionally. Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
And Mr. Barron?
Aye.
And Mr. Igo?
Aye.
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
And Mr. De Young is an aye. Therefore, Mr. and Mrs. Kilmatten, the board passes this request unanimously.
Thank you.
A decision needs to be drafted. That decision then needs to be filed with the town clerk's office. That decision will be as quick as I can get to it. It's not always as fast as you want, but say la vie.
Thanks for everything.
After that's filed with the town clerk's office, twenty days must elapse before it's considered a final decision. When that occurs, you will then bring the approved special permit down to the responsible registry of deeds and cause it to be recorded. I'm not sure if they allow in-person recordings, but you, you, you're going to have to record it and then you.
Right, we'll figure it out.
And then you'll return proof of that having been recorded to our board secretary, who is the charming, as I'm sure you would agree, Sandy Clark.
Sandy's the best.
Yeah, she is the best, no doubt about it. Yes, Mr. Barron?
Withdrawal of the variance?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mister. You are very good, Mr. Barron. Are you now moving to a, let me explain what, what he's just said. You've requested alternate, alternative relief. The special permit has been granted. Therefore, the harder thing to get is a variance and you don't need one now. So would we, would you agree to allow us to withdraw that without prejudice?
Sure. Yes.
Okay, so is anybody prepared to make a motion on the withdrawal of the variance?
So moved.
Second.
Forgive me, but I gotta keep notes. I'm getting all.
Nothing.
Second, Mr. Martin, right?
Yep.
I, I suspect that there'll be no conversation on this, or need for conversation on this motion so made in the second. So therefore, Arwin. So therefore, Mr. Martin? so therefore, Mr. Martin?
Aye.
I, I keep wanting to say all those in favor, but it's gotta be by roll call. Mr. Igo?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Mr. Barron?
Aye.
Mr. DeYoung, aye, carries unanimously on the withdrawal without prejudice of your variance request. Thank you very much. Have a good evening, and look forward to seeing you increase that tax base. We now come to petition.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Good night. You need to shut your mic off. We're going right to another petition. Petition number four eight eight four is Derek J. and Julian M. Fowler concerning property located at fifty-one Abel's Road, West Yarmouth, Mass. Property being in a zoning district, uh, twenty-five. The applicant this evening is speak, uh, seeking a special permit under bylaw four oh seven point, I'm sorry, section four oh seven for a family-related apartment, and no, you can sign off, Mr. and Mrs. Kilmartin. It's okay. You don't need, you're welcome to stay on, but you don't need to. So whoever is presenting this petition, number four eight eight four, would you please identify yourself for us? Julian? I see a Julian Fowler?
Hello.
Yeah, hello. How are you, sir?
Good, thanks.
Identify yourself, please.
Uh, yeah, this is Derek J. Fowler.
Okay, and uh, uh, are you able to give us a video or no?
Uh, yeah, let me see.
Usually, it's just a little camera you might see at the top.
Oh, here we go. Well, there you go.
I know this is all new to everybody, but there we go. Well, maybe your first Zoom conference. I don't know, but. Hello. Why don't you tell us all about your petition?
Um, I had um, purchased the house at fifty-one Abel's Road. And the house itself already, the dwelling was in, uh, had already been built, uh, which was a in-law apartment. And I, after I had purchased it, I was aware, I was reached out from mail that um, that the apartment would needed be, uh, have a permit. And um, so that's where I, I, I kind of, um, the apartment is already, is already in place. It was built with the house uh, when the house was purchased, and, well, when it was built, but um, so, and I was just brought, uh, I wasn't even aware that, uh, that it needed to have a um, a permit when purchased the home, so they brought it to my attention that I would need a, a permit to.
You, you know that old saying, ignorance of the law is no excuse, but maybe we'll try and forgive you this evening. Go on to consider. Now, would you tell us who is going to be the family member that's going to be residing there?
Uh, that's gonna be my parents. I'm dead.
All right, so uh, Mr. Martin, do you have any questions about petitioners?
No, it looks like the apartment's already there and has been there and have had previous relief. Um, it ended in eighty-nine. I guess for its existence or construction or whatever. And it's just a case of um, you proving that you're gonna have having in-laws in the unit and, and therefore coming again before us because you're a different owner than, that was originally approved by them. So it looks like it meets all the criteria. It met all the criteria then, and if there hadn't been any changes, I don't see any issues.
Very good. Mr. Igo?
No questions.
Uh, Mr. Kelly?
No questions.
Mr. Barron?
No questions. It's a large lot. Uh, the, the fact that it's already been in existence within ea- easily within the setbacks required. Um, no objection to the proposal.
Okay. Well, you know, back in nineteen eighty-nine, it appears there was a decision uh, regarding relief to allow a special permit for a family-related apartment. And aren't we coming full circle in life? Here we are again. Many decades, several decades later. I have no questions with the petitioners. I do want to read into the record, please, uh, one piece of correspondence. It is from Karen S. Wren, who is located at forty-three Abel's. Am I saying that right? Abel's Road?
Yes, Abel's, yeah.
Yeah, it's the two L's that confuse me, and that's, uh, she's of uh, West Yarmouth, Mass. as well. And I'm writing in regard to a notice I received concerning petition four eight eight four. Derek and Julian Fowler have requested a special permit for a family-related apartment. They have been exceptional neighbors. Wow, did you write this for her? And tremendously supportive, I'm sorry, and tremendously supportive of me in the recent loss of my husband. Their property is out, was always well-kept and immaculate, and aren't you two good neighbors? And I'll always be good neighbors, you know, it's a it's a short life we got on this earth. So uh, Ms. Moderator, I'm asking uh, for anybody uh, who has any comment in favor, against, or just plain want to speak about it, to raise their hand so that you may identify them.
I, I do not see any hands raised.
Yeah, it's too late. Everybody wants to. They've been watching Jeopardy or something. All right, although I do miss Pat, I gotta tell you. Let me down. Alex, excuse me. Look at, uh, let's, do we really need discussion, or could somebody make a motion, and let's move along?
We'll make a motion.
All right. Who allow the permit, special permit without, without condition?
Okay.
Second.
Can I, can I just add to that, that did, you know, I guess, subject to their, the conditions that were put on it on its original approval in eighty-nine?
Uh, sure. I don't know if everybody's had the chance to review that. But it goes as follows. You two know you need to every year annually, uh, you know, come up with acknowledgement that you continue to have a family member there, right?
Correct, yes.
So there are some nine reasons for the decision. I'm not sure I fully, they allow it. I don't see any real conditions on it. Uh, they do talk about it will be a complete apartment, separate living accommodation, lot being ten thousand square feet. The lot will retain an appearance of a single-family dwelling. Uh, the family-related apartment will consist of no more than one living room, one bathroom, one kitchen, and one bedroom, and will only have two occupants. I guess that we could call a condition, even though they set up the decisions differently back then. Is that a condition that the two of you can uh, accept?
Yes.
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 All right, the apartment will have no more than five hundred square feet of habitable space, closets, and storage. That's a matter that's defined within our bylaws, so you're gonna have to keep it as constructed.
Excuse, excuse me, Mr. Chairman, if I may. Did you say five hundred or eight hundred?
I'm just reading this decision. It's five hundred.
Okay, cause it's a little more than five hundred, and our bylaw allows up to eight hundred, so.
Yeah, so I mean, does anybody really have a problem?
No.
Does anybody have a problem if we don't include that condition?
No, that's fine.
Okay, the uh, there will be at least three off-site, off-street parking spaces for use by the residents. Uh, do you have three off-space, off-street parking spaces?
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, you understand you'll need to have those. That's gonna be a condition. The apartment will be in conformity with the state building code, fire department requirements, board of health requirements, and zoning bylaw. Well, I guess that's already occurred, but we will add that, keep it as a condition. Instead of will be conformity, will remain in conformity.
Mr. Chairman, that's actually five hundred and thirty-two square feet, so I don't know if that's gonna make a difference on that wording, or just gonna leave that.
Oh, it's, it's, it's fine. I think that's what Mr. Martin just spoke to, or Mr. Igo just spoke to. And uh, the reality of it is, is that we don't need to keep uh, condition five in. We can just take that out, uh, because this uh, apartment is well below what is allowed, as Mr. Igo has pointed out. Uh, the lot is serviced by public water facility, and the owners will install a required water-saving devices, uh, water-saving devices in your home?
Yes.
Bowerheads and, and, you know, I don't know what else, but uh, the owners have filed the necessary declaration of covenants, and we record the same at Bonsable Registry of Deeds. Okay, uh, well, that's the decision back then. The rest, my predecessor, uh, was working diligently for the town back then. A shout-out to attorney David Reed, uh, who practices on, in Yarmouth. I'm sorry.
May I just interject and ask a question on those conditions?
Sure.
Just reviewing the, and, and really, those conditions dovetail what is now our present uh, bylaw. So I think David probably wrote those as he wrote a lot of this bylaw.
Uh, I think there's, I'm sorry.
The, the, the one that I was specifically referring to was the requirement to have water-saving devices. I don't think that's in our bylaw. I would ask that we can strike that.
You strike that?
Yeah, I would ask that, if that's.
That we strike that out?
Yeah, we're able to the, to the board.
All right. So uh, Mr. Martin, they have done, uh, there has been a motion made by you to approve the petition as uh, presented uh, to grant the special permit, but on the conditions stated in the November thirteen nineteen eighty-nine decision, uh, there is a suggestion that we strike two of those conditions, numbers five and nine, eight rather, excuse me, and would you be amenable to that being added to your, your motion?
Yeah, that'd be fine.
Okay, is there a second? I hear a second.
It was seconded.
I was gonna say.
That was me. I, 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 I brought the motion.
Jim brought the motion.
I am in agreement. Yes, I, I, I agree. We should strike those.
I'm sorry. Again, you know, I've been at this since eight o'clock this morning. It's my fourth home meeting. Please forgive me. Mr. Kelly moves. Uh, Mr. Kelly, are you agreeable to adding those changes to the motion you made?
Yes.
And to include those conditions we just referenced?
Correct.
All right, and Mr. Barron has already seconded that, has he?
Yes.
You guys are just too quick for me. All right, do we need any discussion on that before proceeding to a vote? Hearing none. Thank you, gentlemen, very much. Hearing none. Mr. Barron, your thoughts? Your vote, please.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Mr. Igo?
Aye.
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Mr. DeYoung says aye as well. Therefore, you carry with the unanimous vote. You ought to be very proud of your presentation, too. The two of you did a wonderful job. The uh, decision will be drafted. It will be filed with the town clerk's office. After the, that filing, twenty days must elapse before it's considered the final decision, assuming there be no appeal during that twenty days, which is very doubtful that that would occur, that an appeal would occur. Uh, you would then bring the special permit to the Bonsable Registry of Deeds, record it, and return proof of its having been recorded to our board secretary, Miss Sandy Clark. All right?
Sounds good.
Thank you very much. And now your petition's done. You can stay on or sign off, whatever you'd prefer.
Okay.
Is anybody interested in making a motion to adjourn?
I would. Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
To Kelly? And Mr. Martin?
Yep.
Anybody need discussion? Although, I can't do it. Mr. Barron?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Mr. Igo?
No.
So you're staying by yourself, my friend.
I can have voted on this one, I'm sure.
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Aye. Good night, everyone.
Good night.
Thank you so much.
Take care.
Look forward to seeing you all in two weeks.
Very good. Thank you. Have a good night.
Bye, good night.
Bye.